Ready?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Here.
Councilman Fajet.
Here.
Councilman Vasquez.
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Hey, thank you. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and I've asked councilmen, our former councilman, former Vice Mayor Bob Best, to do the invocation for this meeting, which is with our new city council.
Feels funny. Almighty God, please bless these chambers. Please give us the serenity to recognize the things we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and that God given wisdom to know the difference. Amen. Good luck, folks.
Everyone join us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone to our regular city council meeting with our new council. And I'd like to get started with presentations to the dignitaries that we have here. As I said at the earlier meeting, we're so thrilled that they're here on a special day as we start the first meeting with our new city council, and also for their support for Miami Springs, for our small town, 100 years old. We're going to be 100 years old and we get better and better, and it's because of the support of our elected officials. We know that without your support, without your guidance, nothing is possible. And with that, everything is possible. So, thank you so much. So, we'd like to present a seal to Senate, I guess we'll do it all together? Okay, if that's all right? I know Senator Avila has a plane to catch tonight. Okay, so we have a seal for a city seal for Senator Brian Avila, and we have a city seal for our Commissioner, Kevin Cabrera, our County Commissioner, and we also have a city seal for our school board member, Dan Espino. All three of them are here, so we want to thank you again.
I'm going to use for Shannon to miss.
Would, I didn't, I should have given you the opportunity. Would any of you gentlemen do us the honor of saying a few words?
Alright, so as many of you probably know, I served in the military about seven years in now in the Florida Army National Guard. And when we're publicly speaking or we're doing anything briefing a commander, briefing a con op or anything of that nature, we have three Bs that we have to stick to, right? Be brief, be bold, and be gone. And those are the three Bs that I'm going to stick to. Really, you know, I, for me, I've been now in the board legislature, this is my ninth year, my ninth year. And there is absolutely no greater honor than to serve my community in the board legislature. And it's really, it's been such a pleasure to work with the council, with the mayor, and I look forward to working with the new council members. You're returning, so Victor's a great friend and, you know, certainly look forward to getting to know George and working with each and every one of you, because really it's a team effort, right? That's how we get things done. And the fact that, as the mayor mentioned, you have state senator here, a county commissioner, school board member, and a representative for, for the state representative in the area. That speaks to how much this community means, how much we work together to accomplish anything and everything for the community. And what a good, you know, what a good environment we have in order to accomplish the best for our residents and for our community. So, really just want to thank all of you again. Mayor, council, thank you so much. I look forward to working with you. We're in week five of the legislative session. And so we have about three weeks to go. And looking forward to bringing back some more funding. In the last two years, working with my colleagues in the state legislature and working with the lobby team and with the council and with the mayor, we've been able to bring back in the last two years a little over $3 million.
More than that, right?
Probably close to $4 million. And, you know, obviously you see that with the, with the new community center. You're going to see that with Royal Pointeana, with South Drive, East Drive. So, those are, those are some of the things that we've been able to accomplish in the last couple of years. And certainly look forward to, you know, working with Walter and with the council and the mayor, with Victor and the council and the mayor on the War Memorial. Because obviously, this community really appreciates veterans constantly, whether it's Memorial Day, whether it's Veterans Day, whether it's Fourth of July. You could tell how much this community really appreciates the service of our service members. And we have, we have members of the council that have served in the military. So, you know, for me, it's really a special place. And this is absolutely special to me, and I want to thank, thank you all again. And thank you for allowing me to serve you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Listener, Commissioner Cabrera.
Thank you. And, you know, while I have not served in the military, I will buy by the seat of the room. You know, I want to congratulate Victor, Walter, the mayor, Councilman Bravo, who's not here today, and George on your elections and reelections, and wish you all Godspeed as we move forward and look forward to serving with all of you and our good senator and school board member and the rest of the folks that represent you, such as Representative Rizzo. And again, again, it is the honor of life to present you all and to represent County Commissioner District Six, and looking forward to serving together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. School board member, who I have to mention, was our previous county, city attorney, who before that was our previous city councilman. So, he's served our city in many capacities.
And continuously.
Yeah, get around. Mayor, council, congratulations. Some of you have known for a very long time. I went to school with the mayor's daughter, back to plus community. But, you know, that's one of the things about growing up here is you get to know everybody, have deep ties to the community. You know, it's an honor to be here. It's an honor to represent City Miami Springs again in a different capacity. And certainly, it wasn't expected to be vice chair after my appointment, but here we are. It's an honor to represent at the same time with all of you, representing with Brian and Kevin, and certainly bring to Miami Springs attention that we deserve and that we need. And you have a gentleman in office that certainly will be doing that. I want to say that this may be one of the few times in history that we've had representatives in higher office from Miami Springs. You know, Brian and I live a few blocks from each other, and that's, that's important. Because certainly it's important to get attention from outside of the community, but, but we also understand the community. We understand our schools, we understand our people, we understand, you know, the importance of the Pelican Playhouse, for example, and what that means in our, in our community and what that is for schools. But it's an honor to serve with all of you. I look forward to working with you. Walter was reaching out to me before I even got appointed, saying, hey, in case this happens, I want something on your radar. So, he didn't waste any time. So, thank you all. You know where I live, you know how to get ahold of me. And you know that, I mean, I regularly speak to all of you. I speak to the clerk, the attorney, William, who, you know, your, your pleasure to work alongside of you as long as you're concerned. And I think the city is going to miss you very, very much in your return. So, it was an honor also to work with you in different capacities. So, thank you again. I look forward to continuing to get to know you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Kevin Cooper, and please extend our gratitude to Representative Rizzo. I know he's in Tallahassee today, but we're greatly appreciative that he asked you to be here to represent him. Okay, so thank you again to, these are our, we are at the level where we talk to our residents, right? But what really, who really makes it happen for us is at the county level and at the state level. And we're, like Dan Espino said, we're really blessed to have representation from residents who live here. Senator Avila and Dan Espino are both Miami Springs residents and know our community very well. And Commissioner Cabrera has been getting to know our community very well, so we're thrilled about that. Okay, so let's move on. We.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
Since we have Jose Fuentes here and Max Losner, maybe they can give us an update on how things are going in Tallahassee with our.
That would be wonderful. This is, and I need to introduce, Jose Fuentes is our lobbyist. Our, he, it's, you would not believe how busy he is at the county level and at the state level, always making sure that what we are asking for, the appropriations that we're asking for at the state level, the, the assistance and the support that we're asking for at the county level, that it's always up in the forefront. And that's a really important, and Max is here also, Max Losner, who the two of them work so hard for us. None of us can be in Tallahassee constantly trying to make sure that what we need is at the forefront. And these two gentlemen from Becker do an amazing job. And anytime I call them and ask, what's the status of this? What's going on with this bill? What's happening here? They have their finger on the pulse and they fill us in and they tell us what we need to do to make sure that. And it shows because we've gotten, as Senator Avila said, a great deal of funding of appropriations, and that takes hard work on the part of our city council and on the part of our administration and our lobbyists.
So, first of all, I want to thank you for those kind words, Madam Mayor. Congratulations on your reelection. Congratulations on Councilman Fajet's reelection. Congratulations on your return reelection, Councilman Vasquez. And congratulations to the newbie now, right? The Vice Mayor, George Santin, congratulations on those elections. And also, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say, you know, it's been great working with William Alonso for so many years. He's honestly been such a professional, a good guy, always available, texts me on Saturday, Sunday, you name it. It's, it's really wonderful. No, I'm kidding, kidding aside, it's, it's great because it shows that he is concerned. And just like I will respond to those texts, he obviously will respond to my texts when there's a concern. But I also want to really, to your point, congratulate, thank Senator Brian Avila, not only his capacity and his current capacity as Senator, but as representative, and your past Senator as well, Manny Diaz, who, when that, it reminds me of kind of like the Miami Heat, right? With Dwyane Wade and, you know, LeBron, and then it was a change, and then different, you know, Flash was another guy, another basketball player. This is, we've had consistency. Rizzo has stepped into the shoes and has honestly, Representative Rizzo's done a great job on the appropriations to make sure that the monies for Miami Springs are still in play. But again, we, we are in a very good position. You stated it earlier. I'm going to let Max identify those appropriations because there's no one better, as you know, when it comes to exactly where the money is on the sheet. So, Max Losner.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good to see everybody, and congratulations on your respective reelections and elections. So, as, you know, it's great to have you all, most of you in Tallahassee for day days a couple of weeks ago. So, currently, the city has three funding requests in the hopper of which is the Canal Bank Restoration, the Curtis War Memorial, and the funding for the senior programs and supplemental services. Currently, the Curtis War Memorial project has been funded in the full amount on both the House and Senate. So, as it goes into conferencing, we expect it will close out and it'll be fully funded. So, that project's in very good shape. The senior programming project has been funded on both sides in the House and Senate. One side came in a little higher than the other. So, again, that'll be hashed out during budget conferencing, which we expect to probably take place this coming weekend, if not next weekend. So, as far as our budgetary requests go, that's where they stand. And the status has been the same since the preliminary budget silo proposals have come out. So, we will certainly keep you all abreast of any updates, any, any progression as we enter budget conferencing weekend.
And the Canal Bank Restoration right now is questionable.
It's quite, it's not over until the handkerchief drops on the 60th day.
We're hoping to get that. That's extremely important for stabilization of our canal banks and for the flood control. So, we're hoping to get that.
I mean, you have very strong leadership, so, you know, with Senator Brian Avila, he's, he's always delivered and, and been there. So, I'm, we're cautiously optimistic, right? Is that the term? I don't know if any of the members of the council had any questions, but of course, you know, we'll happy to answer. I know that our flight just got delayed another hour, so we'll be leaving at 11:00 p.m. to Tallahassee. But that's, that's part of the work. Again.
Yes, sir.
You know, having been here before, I am delighted to be here again and to, to have you all representing us in Tallahassee. And you've always done a spectacular job. And I just can't wait for you guys to get back up there. So, I hope the flight doesn't get delayed anymore and, and keep on swinging.
Thank you.
On our behalf.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to hearing from you until the end of the session. So, thank you so much. And again, congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Matt.
Your representation. Okay, so the next award that we have, presentation is the Yard of the Month Award for the Blanco family at 1105 Bluebird Avenue. Are they here tonight? No? Okay, we'll, we'll get this to them. But if, I want to encourage our residents, if you have a chance this month, as we honor the Blanco family, drive by 1105 Bluebird Avenue and just admire their yard. And we're grateful, very appreciative that they are making Miami Springs beautiful. The next agenda item is open forum. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
I don't.
And no one virtually?
No.
Okay. All right, the next agenda item is the approval of the council minutes of the March 27th regular meeting.
Mayor motioned to approve the movement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Santin. Councilman Fajet.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. We're going to defer the report by the Centennial Committee until, I believe, the next meeting, if they're available. They weren't able to attend this meeting. And our next agenda item is a public hearing for the consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
No.
No, we don't have a public hearing. Oh, sorry, we don't have a public hearing. Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda, there's only one item. Does anyone want to discuss that? Is there a motion?
Listen to approve 9A.
I second the motion.
Okay. Heidi, could you read the resolution? Just for the record, we have.
The consent resolution?
Yes.
Sure.
That, what that it means for the general budget. Do you explain that, what it means for the general budget? This consent, this item, just what that means to the general budget, because it's, it's.
It's a resolution to amend the city's budget. Would you like the resolution titled?
And it's because we're adding a financial.
There are two things in that budget amendment. One is for the new finance director that's starting this one thing, April 12th. And the second part is to fund the search, executive search agency that was chosen to select the new city manager. Those are the two items.
I just wanted that right into the record. All right, if there's no discussion, call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Fajet.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, we move to new business, and we have an ordinance, the first reading.
This is an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, comprehensively updating and amending Chapter 53 Stormwater Utility Management Program of the city's code of ordinances by creating Division Two, Water Quality pertaining to illicit discharges and connections, erosion and sediment, sediment control, and other water quality regulations, providing for survivability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and council, welcome to the new vice mayor, and welcome back to Councilman Vasquez. We, we don't normally have such exciting ordinances for a council's first meeting on the dais, but we did want to make sure that we brought this to you expeditiously. And so, we've, we briefed all four of you individually on what this ordinance signifies. But with your permission, Mayor, I'll go ahead and provide an overview so that the public is aware of what this ordinance does, and then we can go from there. So, the city is, and I'm going to try not to mess this up because it's, there's all sorts of fun, fun acronyms for, for what we are in this process. So, the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDEP, issues what's known as the NPDES permit to cities across the state and counties. The city of Miami Springs is one of several co-permittees of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, which relates to the city's MS4, the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. So, we are an NPDES permutee for an MS4 system. So, the MS4 permit is something that flows down from the federal government to the state through FDEP and then to the county and cities. Miami Springs is a co-permutee with other cities throughout Miami-Dade County, as well as a few government, other government agencies such as MDX and FDOT, as well as Miami-Dade County itself. Pursuant to that permit, the city is required to have certain regulations to enforce water quality standards. This ordinance implements permit requirements that are imposed upon all permittees. So, at, at the simplest level, this is an environmental protection type of ordinance. It's intended to protect our baywaters, our canalwaters, our rivers, streams, lakes, et cetera. So, as I've shared with you all, that is the, the thrust behind these, this ordinance. It's to protect water quality. So, that's done in a variety of ways. And so, this ordinance pursuant to the requirements of the permit is intended to do several things. So, one is it's supposed to control the contribution of pollutants to the municipal separate storm sewer system, the MS4, by stormwater discharges that are associated with activity like construction activity, industrial activity. For example, you may find discharges associated from construction sites such as sediment that comes off of a, of a site. So, this ordinance is intended to control that runoff going into the stormwater system and then affecting our, our water quality. It also prohibits illicit discharges and illicit connections to the MS4 system. The illicit discharges, if you think about what an illicit discharge is, and it's defined in the ordinance, it's effectively pollutants, which are defined extensively in the ordinances. There's a laundry list of things that are considered pollutants. Among them, you'll find things such as animal waste, animal carcasses, paint, gas, fuel, things that sometimes we don't always appreciate can damage our environment. And so, all of those types of pollutants are prohibited as illicit discharges. The ordinance also prohibits illicit connections to the MS4. It further controls the discharge of spills and illegal dumping and improper disposal of materials other than stormwater into the MS4. So, for example, there's a prohibition on, I mentioned, animal waste, grass clippings, leaf litter, motor vehicle fluid. Sometimes we don't realize when our, when we or someone else is doing our landscaping that they're blowing the, the leaves or the grass clippings into the storm sewer system. This is one of those regulations that's intended to prevent that from happening, aside from clogging the storm sewer system that we are so desperately working to improve currently and avoid flooding for the city, as Senator Avila referenced. The, this is intended to protect the waters that ultimately make it out into the bay and to the ocean. And so, I've shared with some of you, or perhaps all of you, it's, it's hard having the same conversation five times. But as I've shared with you, for example, you've heard about animal waste making its way into the storm sewer system and then affecting our water quality. And we've all heard reports on the news about the water quality in Biscayne Bay and different beaches, and don't swim here, it's okay to swim over here. And there's all sorts of technical chemicals and, and things that are way above my understanding, because I, I do not report to be a scientist, nor do I want to be. But all of these things that go into the storm sewer system affect those waters. So, one of the things that the ordinance is intended to do is protect that. There is compliance and inspections and monitoring that's supposed to be done as part of the permit that we're a part of. And so, all of those requirements are also found in this ordinance. As I've shared with you individually, what the, on a practical level, the ordinance is administered by the city's administration through its Department of Public Works, as well as the Building Department. There's other departments that are tangential, tangentially involved in the administration of this ordinance. But the, from a practical perspective, these are things that are already being done. And particularly for sites that have new construction or redevelopment, those contractors and property owners are generally familiar with these processes because they're dealing with it in Miami Springs and statewide. So, it's not a shift in their operations, per se. And for the general resident and property owner, they will, are unlikely to see a huge shift. I think the administration would agree on that point, simply because the, these are things that the city has been enforcing for many years, successfully to the point that we haven't had to have many issues. And where there have been issues, it's generally been treated through the county, through Derm. So, this ordinance has already been presented to our partners at FDEP. They have agreed that the ordinance that you have before you meets the requirements of the city's permit as a co-permutee. So, they've, they've signed off as saying you've met what you're supposed to do under your permit. This is a process that several cities across the county are doing. They're all doing it around this time. The, the the Department of Environmental Protection has really been working with cities across the county and has been identifying cities that perhaps were missing these regulations and needed to create them, like Miami Springs. And we have neighboring communities that are in a very similar situation. And then there's other cities that perhaps had these types of regulations, but they didn't meet the standard that the permit and FDEP require. So, they are updating their ordinances as well. So, this may be the hot topic on the street. If that, happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. Like the motion that we approve 11A. I'll segue with discussion.
We're actually just with, with a question. So, it is my understanding that this ordinance just helps to, to bring the city into compliance with state and, and federal regulations and requirements. And there's no reason for us not to do it. As a matter of fact, we're kind of required to do it. So, so I appreciate all the work that I know went into, you know, drafting this ordinance and everything that happened behind the scenes to get this to happen. So, thank you. I'm, I'm in favor.
I have a question, I guess.
Okay, I have a question, I guess, probably for more for William, but um, both of you. As far as um, the enforcement, and I understand it's going to be county, probably DERM and DEP, you know, from the state, and it's a combination with these agencies that kind of, but locally, um, do our code enforcement officers, is there any additional training that they need in order to make sure that this is a pretty comprehensive, and and I understand that most of this stuff is already kind of happening. We just didn't have it in writing.
They took almost the full day course.
They did? Okay.
And as as we could progress, we're going to have several other employees of the city uh, take the course as well. So, yes.
So it it, the ordinance will be enforced locally through our code enforcement department. And one of the requirements of the permit, there's several requirements. Um, one of the requirements is that you do have staff trained, um, which the city has been doing and had done previously, but there's updated training and new training that's being conducted. So that's been done um, from everyone from the Public Works Department, the Building Official, Building Department and Code Enforcement Staff. So.
That's correct. So there is minimal training
Mm-hmm.
for certain employees. And then, of course, those who have to enforce any infractions, then uh, they would have the the full training.
Okay.
So and and they have already taken that that class.
Okay, thank you. And as far as our public works um, staff who do amazing job throughout the city, is there anything in particular that um, we haven't been doing that we're going to need to do that is honor us, that is going to be very costly or anything in complying with these? I and I understand we have to, we need to have these regulations in place, but I just want to know what the impact is to our city.
No, and 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 ac- actually, um, Public Works separated a couple of days um, for the employees.
Mm-hmm.
Every employee of the Public Works Department took a training and uh, had to take that class. So they were familiar with what they needed to look for out in the field.
Okay.
So.
And Mayor, it it was my understanding, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, that this this ordinance doesn't represent any significant change in the services that residents are receiving. A lot of these things were already being done or was already being enforced. Uh, this is just uh, a way to kind of codify it to to meet the requirements uh, of the state. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Good.
This gives us us the teeth to be able to um, find anybody who we find that is in um, out of compliance.
Compliance with the uh, Councilman, do you have a question?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd like to see if we can uh, you know, uh, put a public awareness program, especially on the residential side. Because a lot of times we take a lot of stuff for granted, you know, from the paints to the simple things as uh, grass clippings. So I think we can try to see how we can uh, do a public awareness program so people can get more aware when they can, they can't do.
We're gonna have at the River Cities Festival, there's going to be a booth, and we are going to have some of the brochures there. Um, Shannon Jaser, who is our Public Information Specialist, is going to be uh, manning that booth. And as well, um, Liz is gathering some brochures and some informational um, packets that uh, will be passed out at the River Cities Festival for the three days.
Okay.
And and we will also, we're we're getting ready to post more things as we have in the past. Um, and we we do post it in the Gazette, in our monthly Gazette, we're always posting things for uh, stormwater runoffs, uh, erosion control. So, you know, maybe you just oversaw some of those uh, boring boring things, but they were, uh, they have been posted for many years now.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I I I agree with the Councilman Santine on this. Um, I was just thinking, as you were speaking, Counselor, of the folks who cut my grass and, you know, and use the blowers and 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 I know that there's gotta be, I don't know, last, a couple of dozen companies doing this in the city. Um, is 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 continue to ensure that they're aware uh, of these of these rules and and these and these codes. And I and I and I just count a dozen of them in my area of east of the city. So that um, in addition to campaign of education to the residents and so forth.
Let's do it through the newsletter too, Tammy, if we can. Our weekly newsletter is a great source to. And and I want to encourage all of our residents, sign up for our weekly newsletter. There is a wealth of information that you will get in your email every Friday. Um, it's the best way that we can get really quick information to you. And also, um, if something happens in between Fridays that we need to, we want to communicate with the residents, you know, we have that ability to do that if you're on our newsletter. So um, please go to our website, and it's very easy um, to sign up. Okay, thank you, Heidi. Any more discussion? We have first and a second. Call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Santine?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, I think that was, let me, I go back. Um, oh, no, all right. So we're going to move to other business and its appointment of um, a um, director and an alternate for the Miami-Dade County League of Cities. Um, I serve as on the um, Mayor's Coalition for the League of Cities. So it would be good if we have, and I know the past two terms, uh, Councilman Fahad has been our uh, representative. Um, I'll open it up to uh, the League of Cities, and I just want to explain the League of Cities is um, the the Miami, this is for the Miami-Dade County League of Cities. So there's thirty-four municipalities in Miami-Dade County. And this is an opportunity for um, communication. It facilitates communication between the municipalities. The league is um, has monthly meetings. And in addition to that, um, Zoom meetings when necessary and other information that they keep us posted. So it's a way, great way for us to collaborate with the um, uh, with the other municipalities in Miami-Dade County.
Mayor? I was gonna say that uh, I think that Councilman Vasquez uh, showed an interest in doing it last time, and he was gracious enough to allow me to to do a a term because I had only done just a fraction of one. So I think he would represent us well.
Okay. Councilman Vasquez?
I was gonna ask Walter if he would stay again, but that's okay. I'm willing to do it. I I was the alternate for that period of time I was here. Uh, be happy to do it. Um, I think the League of Cities is an important uh, venue, as you mentioned. And uh, and and through the League of Cities, you know, the Florida League of Cities and the state, you know, the they are important conversations and information that gets exchanged in those. So I'd be happy to accept.
Okay, and then we need to appoint an alternate.
Well, being the newbie here, I guess I'll have.
Eyes are turning this way.
To me, and that's fine.
Okay, all right. And and I want to say, you know, I I see, at least personally, I take um, part of my responsibility being on the council is to be an ambassador for our city. You know, it's to get out there, to get to know the other communities, to learn from them. You learn a lot from from speaking. I learn a lot from speaking to other elected officials, not just locally in Miami-Dade County, but um, statewide and and um, and also we serve as an ambassador of making sure that people, you know, know Miami Springs, know about us, know our um, issues and can support us. There's there's a lot of times that the support from other communities goes a long way with issues that we're trying to resolve in Miami Springs. So it's really important to build those relationships.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say that I uh, I did attend several of those meetings and 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 Walter uh, Councilman Fahad is held in high regard. Uh, and I saw his work there. So I have uh, big shoes to fill. Thank you. Thank you, Walter, for re- representing us that.
All right. So um, I don't think we need an emotion on that. We'll just appoint.
Consent.
Okay. A consensus. We're all in agreement. Okay, so Victor Vasquez will be the um, Director and um, George Santine will be the alternate. And um, Erica, if you could make sure that they both, sometimes with the League of Cities, they only send the notice of the meetings to
Oh, to the main member. Okay, I thought everyone got it. Okay, I'll let them know.
They know um, the dates of the meetings. Um, okay, so the next agenda item is reports and recommendations from our city attorney goes first.
No report this evening. I just want to welcome once again the new Vice Mayor and welcome all of you back to the council. Welcome back, Councilman Vasquez and Councilman Bravo, who's not here this evening, but also Councilman Fahad and Mayor Mitchell. It's been a pleasure to work with you throughout the years. Um, and I also, I, we didn't get to say it earlier, but I I do want to say thank you to uh, Councilman Loeb for his service because he's uh, come back, you know, from the uh, from the dugout or or whatever the proper baseball term is uh, to to assist the city, um, not once, but twice uh, in a vacancy situation. And he's been a pleasure to work with. And of course, Councilman Best, Vice Mayor Best, um, you know, in my time with the city over the last six, seven years, um, he has truly been a pleasure to work with, and the city has been really fortunate to have him. So I want, I do want to thank him publicly, even though he's he's no longer here with us this evening.
He's there. He's in the back. You heard every word.
So you weren't getting away without being thanked for all of your years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. All right, City Manager.
Um, I'd just like to echo uh, City Attorney's feelings. I'd like to welcome the new council. Uh, hoping to work with you for the next uh, month and a half, I guess. Welcome back, Victor Vasquez, uh, and the new uh, newest member, George Santine. And oh, Bob Best, what can I say about Bob Best? Uh, there hasn't been said already. Um, I'm gonna miss him. Uh, I enjoy our talks in the office, but uh, I know you'll be back. Uh, and George Loeb, of course, he's always there whenever the city needs him. Uh, so I'd like to thank both of them. Mayor, I don't know if, are you gonna bring up tomorrow's meeting? Should I or?
Oh, go ahead, please.
As you know, um, the annexation issue, there was a survey that was mailed out to the business owner. That survey has been returned. Uh, the results are in and uh, our Commissioner uh, wanted to set up a meeting with all of the business owners that voted no. Uh, with the city being present there. So that meeting has been scheduled for tomorrow at six P M. at the Community Center Gym. We don't know how many of the business owners will be there. We don't have a number, but we've set up for about two hundred, a little over two hundred people. Um, because again, because of sunshine laws, uh, I know some other council members wanted to express um, uh, wish to to attend the meeting, but due to sunshine laws, we we can't uh, do that. So the mayor and I will represent the city. I'm planning to have the uh, our police chief will be there and uh, our city engineer, Ramiro Hamil, will be there also. Um, so and I believe I sent all of you the proposed agenda for tomorrow's meeting. Well, hopefully after that, we'll have an idea of where, what direction annexation will take in the future.
Yes. Thank you, William. And I just wanted to add that meeting is um, uh, just open to Commissioner Cabrera is the one who invited the attendees to that meeting, and he has uh, invited the the business owners that voted no. Those are, that was, it's his invitation. Okay, Tammy, anything?
Just, I guess the River City uh, Festival is happening this weekend on Friday. So uh, hopefully everybody's there for the opening ceremony.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll start with um, Councilman Vasquez.
I got a long list. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you. Uh, tha- thank you, Mayor. First of all, um, uh, I'm delighted to be back uh, on this dais, and I want to thank the uh, the residents of Miami Springs for voting me back in. And and I and I certainly will be serving all of the residents of Miami Springs, whether they voted for me or not, uh, even though, as uh, Councilman uh, Best pointed out, we have such low turnouts at these uh, at these elections. And I certainly would like to see us do something about increasing those numbers. We tend to vote in the midterm elections and presidential elections, we get forty percent or more voting. Uh, but uh, uh, speaking of uh, Councilman uh, Best, um, who has become a uh, a brother, a friend, a mentor, uh, sparring, and we, despite what many people think, we don't always agree. But um, um, uh, you're, I I want to just echo uh, the thanks of your service to the city through two eight-year terms. And all the other things that you do through our church Blessed Trinity and the courses that you teach and the baseball games that you call uh, for our, for our 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 high school uh, baseball team. Your your participation in the Pelican Theater. Um, you are, sir, a Renaissance man. And uh, you'll be missed here. Um, and uh, and hopefully we will certainly keep working uh, together on a number of things. So just very quickly, I just want to say some things that I'm gonna be um, uh, following up among the many things we have on the agenda, right? Um, and and the uh, and and Councilman Best mentioned the bed tax. This is an issue that we've been working with and we need to get formulate better. Um, which has to do with the fact that our police force forty percent, about forty percent of that calls it to the hotels. And we don't get a cent from the hotels through the bed tax. And we all pay for that. We we pay our police force, a great police force that we have, and we're gonna keep working on that. The uh, Business and Economic Development Task Force gave the report to the city. I certainly would like for us to see you know, an agenda item, if not the next meeting soon, to discuss the results and the, and as I mentioned in the public meeting that the city had, uh, to put in um, kind of in order of the of the points raised by the task force, many recommendations, kind of decide which one's a priority to look at. Um, certainly, I think it would be priority for me that the city had someone working in the city exclusively on attracting businesses to the city. And uh, and and I'm glad to see that the Centennial Commission is gonna be reporting to us at the next meeting because I think that's wonderful. That we're going to celebrate um, um, our 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 one-hundredth anniversary. And I shared with a couple of folks, I read a long article about Glenn Curtis in the museum up in Pensacola, I think it is, if I'm not mistaken, where some of his planes are. It's a great uh, part of this. And then lastly, the War Memorial that was mentioned several times, including uh, uh, Senator Brian Avila at uh, Bob Best and I and a number of folks have been working on raising money to refurbish that memorial on Curtis Parkway where we have our Memorial Day and Veterans Day celebration. It's about fifty years since the last time it was refurbished. And we have raised some money. We have sold some of those bricks, and we're gonna be out there in River Cities selling bricks. So if you haven't bought one, uh, you can buy one and and have your family's name put on it, or it can be dedicated to a veteran in your family. Uh, so uh, I'm encouraged by uh, Senator Avila's uh, words about the appropriations of this. And and hopefully, you know, getting the bulk of that money that we need to really get that uh, monument done. And 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 Senator Avila picked up on something that we all know. And and certainly the members of the American Legion that are here, we all know how important uh, veterans are to Miami Springs community. I'm a proud third-generation veteran. And what a wonderful way to honor, to get that uh, monument looking twenty-first century. And so that's some of the uh, things that uh, you know, I'm I'm looking forward to. Um, and uh, and then, of course, to all the other things that we have to dredge. So I've already got my little list of of um, of items that uh, we always put in for the budget. And so there are a couple of things already I have in mind for that, but that's a little bit later on in the summer. And Mayor, it's a, a- as I told you, uh, individually, it's a great honor for me to have served my first term under your leadership. And it's a great honor to serve. I'm looking forward to this term. I know this is your last term. So uh, we're gonna have a lot of fun. And and unfortunately, we'll have some some really long meetings, but that's the, that's the way the cookie crumbles. And that's what we do for the city of Miami. That's what we do while we're here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Fahad?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, just wanted to uh, once again, thank uh, uh, George Loeb for uh, his service and 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 for stepping in once again uh, in in service of the community. Also to uh, Ralph Wakefield and 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 Nancy Jones. I mean, obviously, it was standing room uh, only here. They've they've had an incredible impact on our community. It's it's uh, it's clear. And uh, and very, very appreciative of of them and 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 their service to our community. And speaking of service to the community, I don't think anybody personifies uh, selflessness and service to the community uh, more so than than uh, Councilman Bob Best, who uh, who has seen a a lot of change and ushered in a lot of change in the city and served admirably. And uh, we are in indebted to him for everything that he's done for our community. So, and to the new or returning members on the council, looking forward to to working with you guys. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, and Councilman Santin? Thank you, Councilman. Okay, and Councilman Santin?
Well, I want to first start by uh thanking uh, uh, all the candidates that ran for the election, including the opponents that I had in my s- seat. Orlando and uh Mary Jo was a pleasure. It really was a uh, a nice experience because we all got along and uh we, it was a friendly rivalry. And uh hopefully to work with them in the future. Um, I'm definitely uh very proud to be the newbie. And especially because the, my community of friends, neighbors showed up and stepped up to the plate. Maybe not the uh, the numbers that we would like to see, but it's the numbers we've been seeing for thirty years, actually twenty years ago that were less. So for those that did go vote, I'm very proud for you guys showing up in support. Um, and to Bob, who I uh actually ran against him in sixteen years ago. And uh, and we became friends and we've talked over the years. He knows how involved I've been in the community and I know how involved he's been in the community. And I hope uh to make you proud there, Bob. It's concerning that I'm running in, I'm in your seat now. Yeah, that's kind of fit. Thank God you and me are tall, tall. So it's not that bad. Um, but ultimately, my goal and I hope the whole, the whole council is that we can uh come together and implement like a strategic plan for our city. One that defines that our city, uh the vision we have for that city. And one that we could get everybody, even if it's just two thousand. But whatever it is, we need to have the community uh, you know, um, support it. And uh, and uh that way we have a hope that there's something that everybody will feel proud about. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And um just on my end, um, welcome to, again, it's been a pleasure um serving with our previous council. And uh I am um very much looking forward to all of us working together. I know that we will not always agree on issues, but we all have the same goal. We love the city and we want to serve it. And we want to serve our residents and improve the quality of life. So um, I do want to remind everyone that River Cities Festival starts Friday. Um, it's, you know, our annual get out and see your neighbors and friends and everything that you haven't seen in so long. So um please be there for the opening ceremony Friday afternoon and then Saturday and Sunday. And I guess the last thing I wanted to mention is um for the next meeting, Erica, if we could just have a discussion on, I know we did this before when the new council came on board two years ago. And I think it would be good to do that again, is the um workshop, William, on the projects that we have to date going and going forward. So we're all kind of on the same page. Um, I think that was a very fruitful when we did it two years ago. Um, and I believe we did it sometime possibly in May. I, I don't remember exactly. But um, and I think that needs to be a separate workshop so we can just talk. It's not really voting, but just um all get on board and, and um we have a lot of things um uh that have been coming down the pike. And in city, it doesn't, things don't get done right away. Some projects take years and some projects, we are looking for the appropriations for years and all of a sudden they're in place. So um it'd be nice to um for all of us to, to um kind of have that information and um, and also the projects that we'd like to see going forward before the budget process starts in August. So with that said, thank you everyone for being here. God bless you. God bless our beautiful city. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.